Good evening. This is the monthly meeting of the Wallingford Zoning Board of Appeals. Before we start the meeting, we'll say the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Tonight's decisions will be published in the Record Journal on Friday, June 24, 2016. The effective date of your variance will be Friday, June 24, 2016. The date of certified copy is recorded in the land records. Statutory 15-day appeal period will expire on Sunday, July 10, 2016. If you commence operations and/or construction during the appeal period, you do so at your own risk. Our first hearing tonight is 1613 Elwood Road.
This applicant is requesting variance for front yard setback of 21.5 feet where 40 feet is required, side yard of 3 feet where 20 feet is required, and building coverage of 19.7 percent or 15 percent maximum as permitted to construct detached garage in a R-18 district. The existing lot is an undersized, irregularly shaped, nonconforming lot with no existing garage. Consideration should be given to the option of attaching a garage to existing dwelling thus reducing side yard and front yard setbacks. There's also two letters of support from neighbors, Richard and Anna Maria Nesto and Tony Scarfarello.
Thank you, Mr. Rice. Good evening. Would you state your name and address, please, for the record?
Sherry Esposito, 11 Elwood Road.
Okay.
Alex Esposito, 11 Elwood Road.
And Paul Buckley Reynolds from Stonewall Boundaries Land Survey in 80 Sage Drive.
So who's going to...
I'll start the discussion. That's okay. So my clients, Alex and Sherry, are proposing a 20 by 24 detached garage. They did look at the option of attaching the garage, but it proved to be not feasible for this lot size. This lot size is only 46 percent of the current required area for an R-18 zone. In Parkview, all these lots are so undersized that it's very difficult to add any changes to an existing footprint. They would just like to have some garage space on this property. If they did attach it, it would bring this garage further back, so it wouldn't have such a... we wouldn't be asking for such a variance on the front yard setback, but the side setback would... we wouldn't be able to fit the side setback, because if you look on the drawing, the door to the house is further back than what we're actually proposing here. And also, if we had it attached, the natural light going in the kitchen, which is on that side of the house, would be reduced to nil. There would be no more window space in the kitchen. The neighborhood itself is already grossly miszoned, as I just said, and many homes in the adjacent vicinity are similar to what we are proposing. That's about it.
Yes, those homes were all built before we had zoning.
Yes, they're all legally nonconforming.
Many people that live there do have trouble if they're going to build an addition or you want to put a garage in. Does anyone in the commission wish to ask the applicant any questions?
Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to indicate also there was a letter here from the town engineers to Casey involved. Basically, it says it's recommended that the owner contact the water and sewer divisions prior to constructing proposed detached garage at determined location of existing water and sanitary sewer utility service pipes to building. Proposed garage conflicts or utility service device, the garage should either be moved to a different location or may be necessary to relocate the utility service pipes. I just wanted to bring that on because...
Did you already contact that? Yes, okay. Does anyone else have any questions for the applicant? Does anyone in the audience wish to speak in favor of this application? Anyone wish to speak against the application? Seeing none, I close the public hearing and leave it up to the commission for...
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to accept the application, I mean approve the application, better use of the property without altering the character of the neighborhood.
Second.
Motion to approve, Mr. Wolfher.
Yes, to approve.
Mr. Knickerbocker.
Yes, to approve.
Mr. Ruzek.
Yes.
Mr. Rice.
Yes.
Mr. Bernie.
Yes. Your application has been approved.
Thank you very much. Good night.
Next application is 16014 at 21 South Cherry Street. These folks wish a... Go ahead.
This application is for a height of 26 feet where maximum is 15 feet is permitted to allow the existing detached garage in an R-6 district. This office request has possible conditions for approval that the existing garage be used for storage purposes only. No commercial activity to be conducted on the property and no plumbing hookups to be permitted.
Which one of you gentlemen is going to...
I'll speak.
Present the application? We'll give you your name and address, please.
It's Bob Sorenson, 162 Country Way, Madison, Connecticut.
Okay, you want to tell us what you want to do?
Well, we purchased the property. It's a two-family house with a detached three-car garage. And we purchased the property to rehab it because it was damaged by fire and the gentleman who owned the house had passed away. We were under the understanding that everything that was there, we could utilize on the property when we purchased it. We weren't aware that there was any zoning violations at the purchase of the property for the garage. I guess a permit was pulled in 1988 and was never inspected, and the original owner built a garage with a room above it that has a height of 24 feet. And I guess the building permit in 1988 was for a three-car garage with a flat roof. So in talking to the zoning personnel in town, they said that we should get through the Zoning Board of Appeals for the height of the building regardless, because now there's a ding on the property if we ever wanted to sell it in the future, or what we were going to do. So we're here to get by the zoning height restriction for the pre-existing structure that we haven't touched. It's been there since 1988. But the question came up and this whole... the whole thing snowballed when we tried hooking up the power in the sewer, because the original homeowner had pulled a permit in 2005 for a separate electric service in the back. That was inspected, the underground service, and was never hooked up. The sewer was hooked up already to the system that's there, and we found that out because we put a camera in the line to make sure the line was good, because I didn't want to refurbish a whole house and then have a problem with the sewer system once we move in or have tenants move in. So the lateral that was in the backyard was hooked up to the garage already. And really, the question came is, could we have a sink and a toilet in our detached three-car garage on the first floor, or could we not? And then we also have a violation of the height of 26 feet. So I couldn't get the permit to hook up the sewer or septic or the electric until we figure out what we can do from you guys, basically.
Okay, but you realize that if you do hook up electricity and sewer there, you wouldn't be able to use that building as a residence?
Yes. We understand that.
Any other...
I mean, we can use it for storage only, is what they told us, which is fine, but it would be nice, if we're going to use it for storage, that we could have a sink just to wash our hands in the back, seeing I have to put a new lateral in for the house anyway, or I'd like to.
Okay.
Because right now, we're connected to the neighbor's lateral. So there's one lateral for two houses, and it splits off down the neighbor's driveway. We were going to hook a new one up down our driveway to the town road, but it doesn't make sense to do that if I can't hook up the whole property.
I get you. Anyone have any questions for the applicant?
So the intention is just strictly for storage purposes for the room upstairs?
Yes.
Okay, so there's no commercial purpose or repair or anything?
Okay. Thank you.
Does anyone in the audience wish to speak in favor of this application? Against the application? Seeing none, I close the public hearing and leave it up to the commission for...
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve better use of the property without changing or altering the character of the neighborhood, as it seems to have been there for 30 years as it is. But my approval is with the condition that it not be used for commercial purposes or for residence purposes, for storage only.
Motion to approve, Mr. Wolfher.
Yes, to approve.
Mr. Knickerbocker.
Yes, to approve.
Mr. Ruzek.
Yes.
Mr. Rice.
Yes.
Mr. Bernie.
Yes. Your application has been approved. You can go ahead and do what you want to do. Thank you. Next application is 1615 for 52 Calhoun Road, requesting a reduction of the side yard from 46 feet 6 inches to 12 feet 1 inch. Who's going to present the application? Say your name and address, please.
Ronald Wetmore, 52 Calhoun Road.
Go ahead and tell us what you want to do.
So I'm looking to put a 30 by 30 garage on our existing house.
Excuse me, sir, can you just pull the microphone closer to you? Thank you.
Looking to put a 30 by 30 garage on an existing house. Right now, we're limited on space for storage. We've got a small crawl space in the basement that I keep hitting my head on every time I go to get a tool. We've got a small walk-in attic that I hit the collar ties every time I go up there with my head. Six feet 3 inches tall and be 50 years old next year, hoping just to get a garage where I can just walk in normal. And we had Giulianos do the surveying, and our house was built prior to the zoning regulations also. And it's a shoebox road. It's a paper road next to our house, which I talked to the town engineer, and he said it's kind of impossible to put a road there, because there's not enough footage to put a road there anymore. And I met with the mayor once also on that shoebox road, possibly abandon it in the future.
Okay. Anyone have any questions for the applicant?
Mr. Chairman, for council, I mean for staff, Amy, can you explain the memorandum a little bit clearer, what you wrote to the mayor about this road?
As Mr. Wetmore just said, Calhoun Road, that's a paper road, shoebox road. I've been out there. It's undevelopable. It's basically a side yard, so he's got an excessive hardship having to declare two front yards, when this is in essence operates as a side yard. So I've initiated the process to request for the town to consider abandoning that property.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to speak in favor of this application? Against the application? Seeing none, I close the public hearing and open it for approvals.
Mr. Chairman, I feel like I've been lied to, because he said he turns 50 next year, and I don't believe it, first of all. But secondly, I would like to make a motion to approve. The fact that there's this paper road here makes this lot different than other similarly situated lots, and therefore, there's a hardship with respect to this property, and therefore, I make a motion to approve better use of the property without altering the character of the neighborhood.
I'll second that.
Motion to approve, Mr. Wolfher.
Yes, to approve.
Mr. Knickerbocker.
Yes, to approve.
Mr. Ruzek.
Yes.
Mr. Rice.
Yes.
Mr. Bernie.
Yes. Your application is approved. Next application is 1616. Property in the vicinity of 333 Christian Street. Choate School wishes to build a new auditorium with music, choral, and dance classrooms, and additionally, they want to construct a new parking lot.
This application is for building height of 38 feet where maximum 30 feet is permitted to construct a performing arts auditorium of classrooms in an R-6 district.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. For the record, my name is Joan Malloy. I'm an attorney with the firm of Lachlan Fitzgerald. Our office is located at 150 South Main Street here in Wallingford, Connecticut. Present with me to my left is Mr. Kevin Smith, who's a partner at Robert A.M. Stern Architects. We are here tonight on behalf of Choate Rosemary Hall Foundation, Inc., who is the applicant. And as noted in the legal notice, Choate is desirous of constructing a new auditorium building, which will house music, choral, and dance classrooms. The building will be located east of the Paul Mellon Arts Center, which is located at 333 Christian Street. That's a very large piece of property. In any event, we are seeking a variance to allow the building height to be 38 feet. The Choate campus is located in a residential district, and I believe it's actually the R-18 district. And the R-18 regulations are primarily focused on single-family residences, and obviously, an educational institution such as Choate, which has approximately 860 students, cannot reasonably expect to meet the needs of those students with regulations designed for single-family residences. With your permission, I'm going to turn the presentation over to Mr. Smith, so he can show you the plans and some of the technical information.
Sure.
And I will give you copies of what he's going to review.
Yeah, my name is Kevin Smith, Robert A.M. Stern Architects. We're in New York at 460 West 34th Street.
Speak a little louder, please.
Okay. With your permission, I will...
There's a microphone over there.
The site of the proposed auditorium, as Joan mentioned, is directly east of the Paul Mellon Arts Center. It's really in the center of Choate's campus, located on Christian Street and set back from the road and nestled into a hillside. There's a substantial grade change for the portions here, which are now playing fields, and it's nearly... the height of those playing fields is approximately elevation 170, and the proposed elevation of the parapet of the building is 173.85. So it's pretty much the same. What is proposed is a new auditorium here. Here's the Paul Mellon Arts Center, which is its distinguished piece of architecture designed by noted architect I.M. Pei and completed in 1972. And it has a very consistent parapet height. Our building, which is proposed, is directly to its east and maintains the height of that parapet in its northernmost section. The portion that is adjacent to Christian Street is about 15 feet lower. And we are also providing a pedestrian path that leads to the upper hillside, which extends the path that is presently at the Paul Mellon Arts Center. This center section contains a large auditorium, which is designed for school meetings as well as music and performances. And then the southern end has a recital practice studio for the music program and a variety of classrooms and practice rooms. Because this building nestles into the hillside, we did a calculation of its height and went around the perimeter, and so it gives it an average height above grade at its highest point of 38 feet. And I will show you partially why the aesthetic effect is intended, that it... because the Paul Mellon Arts Center is its distinguished work of architecture, we are trying very much to relate to it in a very sympathetic way. And this is the current height of the Paul Mellon Arts Center. And you see a corner here of the auditorium complex, which is exactly at that height. Likewise, on the north side, which faces the campus and the great lawn that carries that height across, and this is the archway that I mentioned that leads up the hillside. So you can see kind of before and after the views of... without it, and then with the addition. And as I mentioned, the section along Christian Street is significantly lower in height.
Happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Building is going to be... look very similar in color to the Mellon Arts Center?
The intention is that it would have a similar color.
Parking area, how many parking spaces are going to be there?
125 spaces.
And that is, appears to be off of what's called Rosemary Lane?
That is correct, yeah.
And who will be parking there? Will they be using this for their performances at the Mellon Arts Center as well as for the new building?
Well, the intent of the parking lot really is to consolidate some parking areas that are scattered about. As you're well aware, the students do not use vehicles when they're on campus. I think it's only a certain number of seniors that are allowed to have cars. So the students are going to be walking there. There might be staff that will utilize that parking. It's an overflow parking for certain areas. Now, occasionally, might there be a public performance where members of the public might drive? Yes, that's where they would be parking.
Okay. I have a problem with the traffic down here, because this is right at the... coming out of Rosemary Lane onto Christian Street to the east is the crest of the hill. Under normal conditions, it's kind of hard to get out of there. And if they have an overflow crowd and there's 120 cars parked here, I think that Choate... we're going to have to make a requirement that Choate have traffic control there, either in the form of a guard or a traffic lady or something.
If I can reassure you, this has to go to planning and zoning, and as part of the planning and zoning process, we have a traffic study that's going to be introduced. So the issue of what traffic is going to be produced by this and what traffic control measures are necessary will be addressed during the planning and zoning process, because it is required as part of the process. And we have already had conversations with Casey Costello, the town planner, and discussed the fact that we actually have been working on a traffic study to submit with the application. But we can't submit that application until we know whether or not we can construct the building with the variance, which is for the height of the building, to allow, as you might expect, a typical auditorium, ceiling tends to be higher. And as Kevin has indicated, between the topography and trying to match the existing Paul Mellon Arts Center. So the primary issue that's before this board is, will you grant the height variance? But I want to reassure you, the issue of traffic will be addressed during the planning and zoning process.
Thank you. Anyone have any questions for the applicant?
Mr. Chairman, I have a question, Attorney Malloy. How come all of the variances aren't listed here?
I'm not sure what you mean. Why aren't all the variances listed? I did submit a list of variances that's that long.
It's incomplete.
What am I missing?
Well, for instance, they're putting up a building right now that we just approved the variance a few months ago, and there's nothing in here. The most recent one they have is '08.
It's a different piece of property.
It's not Choate?
It's Choate, but that has a different address. So the rules are you have to, not based on the name of the applicant, but on the property.
Is it on this property?
It's over on Beaumont Avenue. I wasn't trying to mislead you, but the rule... when you submit the application, you submit a list of the variances that are applicable to the property and which the proposed structure is located.
Property on Beaumont Avenue has no attachment whatsoever to this?
Other than it's owned by Choate Rosemary, and it's part of a larger campus, but they actually have several different parcels, again, how they're classified by the town. But pursuant to the assessor's records, that is a separate piece of property.
Okay, thank you.
No problem.
Any other questions? Is anyone in the audience wish to speak against, rather, in favor of this application? Yes, sir?
Good evening. Vinnie Servoni, Wheatfield Drive, Wallingford. I'm also on the town council. When these plans were complete, Choate did reach out to the neighbors, and they also emailed the members of the council to give us an opportunity to meet with them and to review the proposal. The meeting time was a little inconvenient for the council, because it was on the night of the council meeting. And Allison Katie, who's in the Public Relations Department, did meet with me separately, at a time more convenient to me, to give me an opportunity to review the application. One of the points that I recall is that the property on Beaumont Avenue that you were just talking about, its original plans included this auditorium and would have required a much more significant height for the building on Beaumont Road. My understanding is that instead, they've moved the auditorium to this project. And it was a great accommodation to the neighbors on Curtis, who were alarmed by a building that tall in their neighborhood. The other point I'd like to make is that Choate has been very generous with the community with respect to the use of the Paul Mellon Arts Center. Many of us have attended fundraisers there for SCOW, and we've also attended performances of the Wallingford Symphony Orchestra. An improvement like this isn't just an improvement for Choate, it is an improvement for the neighborhood and for the community. So I encourage you to look favorably upon it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Servoni. Anyone else wish to speak in favor of the application? Anyone wish to speak against the application? Seeing none, I close the public hearing and leave it up to the commission.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to accept the application, better use of the property without altering the character of the neighborhood.
Second?
Motion to approve, Mr. Wolfher. Yes, to approve.
Mr. Knickerbocker.
Yes, to approve.
Mr. Ruzek.
Yes.
Mr. Rice.
Yes.
Mr. Bernie.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
The next application is application 1617 for 44 Parkview Road in Wallingford, and they are asking for a side yard... And they are asking for a side yard variance. Required by the regulations is 20 feet and they're proposing 10.5 feet.
Good evening. My name is Alan Marrero, 44 Parkview Road. This is my wife, Kristin Marrero, same address. Basically, what we're looking to do is just put a full shed dormer on our second floor. We own a Cape and we're basically just trying to expand it so we can start a family. And we are short on our side by 10 feet. And most of our neighbors in our neighborhood actually have dormers and stuff like that and it doesn't really change the character of our neighborhood. And we're basically, that's all we're really looking for, is just the space.
The footprint of the house will still be the same, is that correct?
Correct.
Not going to overhang or anything?
In the back, it is going to overhang 2 feet, just for additional spacing. But other than that, on the side, it doesn't protrude anything with the footprint.
Okay. Anyone have any questions for the applicant? No one has any questions? Anyone in the audience wish to speak in favor of this application?
Michael Giannelli, 42 Parkview. I'm in favor of the addition of 44 Parkview. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Anyone in the audience wish to speak against the application? Seeing none, I close the public hearing and turn it over to the commission.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve this application for better use of the property in keeping with the character of the neighborhood.
Second.
Motion to approve, Mr. Wolfher.
Yes, to approve.
Mr. Knickerbocker?
Yes, to approve.
Mr. Ruzek?
Yes.
Mr. Rice?
Yes.
Mr. Bernie?
Yes. Your application is approved.
Thank you.
The next application is application 1618. It's a request for special exception at 955 Church Street.
This is a special exception request from Van Dyke for customary home occupation of a hair salon at 955 Church Street in our 18th district. We do have one piece of information that came back and it's indicated that the hair salon must be licensed by a health department and floor plans are required. This is from the chief sanitarian.
Hi, I'm Christina Van Dyke. My husband, Richard Van Dyke.
Excuse me, you'll have to pull the microphone a little closer. Thank you.
Christina Van Dyke and my husband, Richard Van Dyke, my contractor, Sean Reynolds. So, I'm looking to put the business in my home to further and better my business and to also be available to my three children that I have here in the Wallingford school system. I'm looking to maintain the clients that I have. I have several in the community. I have grown tremendously in the past three years that have been a stylist and I'm looking to continue that growth and be an asset to the community, for family and friends as well.
Is your business presently located somewhere else?
No, it's currently in Wallingford. I rent a chair at a salon here in Wallingford and I'm looking to leave that position so I can better myself and my family.
Now, do you have any parking facilities?
We do. We have a very long driveway and it's a circular driveway. It can substantially hold a good number of cars.
Will you be working by yourself or will you have someone?
Solely by myself.
And your hours will normally be?
They're regular business hours and then I do one evening a week to accommodate all of my clients that work during the day and can't come to me during the day.
Are you going to have a sign there?
No sign.
Any questions for the applicant?
Hello. So, I see in the drawing that you provided, there's a couple different stations, it looks like, for haircutting. You don't have any expansion plans within this site in terms of hiring additional stylists?
No. What that is, is I'm allowed to have two clients at one time. So, if I have a color, I can give a haircut on a different client and then see that client out and finish my client that has a color. And I tend to only have one client at a time. My time is just as valuable as theirs, so I do not double book or triple book like the average stylist does. I just don't do it.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Chairman, how many clients per day do you think you're going to have?
On average, it's about four to eight. I know that's a wide range, but because sometimes I have a client that's three hours, you know, depending on what services they're rendered, I may only get a client or two in there. And I have three children and I really work around their schedules and my client's schedule. So, it varies, but no more than eight in a day. And that's when you're doing a haircut after a haircut after a haircut after a haircut. I don't see more than that in a day.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Anyone in the audience wish to speak in favor of the application? Against the application? Seeing none, I close the public hearing and leave it to the commission.
Mr. Chairman, I vote that we approve the application to prevent a restraint of trade.
Second.
Motion to approve, Mr. Wolfher.
Yes, to approve.
Mr. Knickerbocker?
Yes, to approve.
Mr. Ruzek?
Yes.
Mr. Rice?
Yes.
Mr. Bernie?
Yes. Your application is approved.
Thank you for your time.
Mr. Bernie, can I go out of order for a second?
Certainly.
I noticed that there's no receipts and I would like to make a motion that there be no meeting in July. I don't know if that's appropriate to make that motion at this point.
I think that's a real great motion and I second it. All in favor? Aye. So, be no meeting on July 18th.
Who says bipartisanship is dead?
How about we vote on accepting last month's minutes?
I move to accept.
I second.
All in favor? Aye. Here a motion to adjourn.
Mr. Chairman, do we have to do anything on the revised minutes for April 18th? Or are they just?
Let me explain that one a little. Apparently, in the transmission electronically of the minutes, various departments, we're missing some various different pages as you may have or may not have. So, we provided a new copy, a complete copy, and the pagination of them may be off from the first.
Well, then perhaps we should wait until we get those before we vote on accepting.
Those were included. The revised ones are with correct pagination. It may or may not match what you had, but because there was a discrepancy in some.
So, we're voting on the revised minutes, right?
I'll make a motion to accept the revised minutes for April 18th meeting.
Second.
Discussion?
All in favor?
Discussion, please. Amy, can you just briefly tell us what part of the minutes were revised or what was missing?
Something in the transmission. It's a little unclear. It was drawn to our attention from the town clerk, who had missed a page, which, upon further review, was a different page than we were missing. So, we don't know what quite happened, but in how many other pages were missing, so Cindy has reissued them to me in its entirety and that's what I've provided to you as a revised version.
Thank you. Do we have a motion on the floor? Do you have a second?
All in favor? Aye.
Make motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor? Aye.